With the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We'll go over the serving planning board. We're meeting in line.
Chair on microphone?
Beth, has this meeting been advertised according with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, chairman, it has.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Candell.
Here.
Ms. Larmen.
Here.
Mr. Mueller.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Isataka.
Here.
Mr. Velosen.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Councilman Zabrowski.
Here.
Chairman Tai.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Um, memorialization of resolutions, there are none. I need to, uh, to accept the minutes from last month's meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion for the February 19th, 2025 meeting.
Motion to accept the minutes.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Having none, good communication agenda?
Um, we have a memo from the municipal clerk dated February 25th, 2025 regarding two resolutions. The first resolution is number 2025 dash 68, referring to the planning board, various properties within the borough study as areas in need of redevelopment.
What a pleasure.
So chairman, for the record, it was 16 properties identified as block 246, lots 1, 1.02, 1.04, 1.05, 1.06, 1.07, 1.08, 2.02, 2.04, 2.11, block 247, 1.03, block 247.02, lots 1.01 and 1.03, and finally block 251, lots 1.01, 2.01 and 2.02, all located on either side of North and South Crossman Road, inclusive of any and all streets, paper streets, private drives and right aways, as shown as the map of study area number one on exhibit A.
We need a motion to.
Uh, yes.
What's your pleasure?
Make a motion to accept.
Do I have a second? Have a motion unmade, second, anybody opposed? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. All in favor? Okay.
Mr. Candell.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Mueller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Taka.
Yes.
Mr. Velosen.
Yeah.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Zabrowski.
Yes.
Chairman Tai.
Yes.
Okay, the second resolution from the clerk, um, which was referring to us was resolution number 2025 dash 69. For the record, former JC PNL power plant site identified as block 174, lot 1.01, formerly block 174, lot 1, and the following additional blocks and lots, block 174, lot 1.02 and block 176, lot 2.06, inclusive of any and all streets, paper streets, private drives and right aways, and as shown on the map of study area attached to exhibit A.
What's your pleasure on this matter?
Make a motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Having the motion made and seconded, are there any that oppose? Hearing none?
Do a roll call vote. Mr. Candell.
Yes.
Ms. Larmen.
Yes.
Mr. Mueller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Taka.
Yeah.
Mr. Velosen. Mr. Williams. Councilman Zabrowski.
Yes.
Chairman Tai.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all of that. Now we'll get into the substance of tonight. Um, site plan subdivision. Mr. Sax, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, Lawrence Sax, on behalf of the applicant, Thomas Fallon. Uh, this property is located at 16 Charlotte Street. Uh, it's also known as block 125. It is lots 6, 6.01, 7, 7.01, 8 and 9. Uh, the property is located in the R7 zone. Uh, this property is on the corner of Charlotte Street and, uh, and Waterworks Road, or Water Tower Road, I'm sorry, uh, and the total lot area is roughly 15,493 square feet. Uh, there is a single family residence on the corner of Charlotte and Water Tower, and we're here this evening, uh, seeking approval, uh, to consolidate and subdivide these lots to create two separate larger residential lots. Uh, it does require some bulk variance relief. Uh, it requires relief for a minimum lot area for the corner lot, uh, lot depth, a front yard setback, a rear yard setback and lot coverage. Uh, all of them are somewhat de minimis variances. Uh, they don't involve a lot. Uh, I do have my engineer and planner here who will, uh, describe those variants, the variances that we're seeking. Uh, we're also seeking some design waivers, uh, for pavement width of Water Tower, which is an existing roadway, uh, for sidewalk, uh, and for curbing. Um, we have two reports, uh, that we received from your professionals. Uh, one was dated February 24th, uh, from Morgan Engineering, and the second one was, uh, dated February 26th, uh, from, uh, your planner, and, uh, we're prepared to address both of those reports as well. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do have one witness here this evening. I do have Mr. Fallon here, but I don't, unless there's any questions of him, uh, he's, he's here, but, uh, my primary witness is Mr. Mark Lieber from East Point Engineering. Uh, he's a licensed professional engineer and planner, and he will go over all of the relevant testimony.
Bring him up now?
I can bring him up.
Can you raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth in this matter, so help you, God?
Yes, I do.
You are sworn.
Uh, Mr. Lieber, if you can give the board the benefit of your professional qualifications and background.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark with a C, Lieber, L-E-B-E-R. I'm with East Point Engineering. Our office is in Marlborough. I graduated with a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Drexel University and completed the MBA program at Rutgers Graduate School. I was licensed in 2003 as a professional engineer, in 2005 as a planner, and in 2006 I had completed the Certified Municipal Engineering Certificate Program. I am a former member of the Halltownshire Planning Board, and I worked on both public and private side of this business, presently only doing private work.
And you've testified before this board in the past, Mr. Lieber?
Yes, I have.
Okay, your license is still in good standing?
It is.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, can you make the motion that we accept the, uh?
Do I have a second to accept his credentials?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lieber, if you can, uh, give the board the benefit of your analysis of this and what's being proposed with respect to this property?
Sure. Uh, I want to hand out a couple of photos that I took at the property today. That's.
I guess we'll mark, Mr. Fisher, I guess we'll mark that A1.
A1.
Okay, thank you.
It's, uh, four pages, uh, total eight photos. Well, that's being passed out. Uh, just to reiterate the background here, it's, uh, block 125. You heard earlier, it's lots 6, 6.01, 7, 7.01, 8 and 9. Corner of Water Tower Lane and Charlotte Street, total frontage on Charlotte's 94 feet, and then the lot has 165 feet along Water Tower. Zone here is R7. Uh, at the corner, there's an existing dwelling. It's a single family home. Surrounding the property are all single family homes, except to the north where there's a cemetery there, and, uh, Water Tower does provide access to the cemetery. There's a gate there. Um, I presume that that gate remains closed until there's a maintenance, uh, vehicle that has to exit to, uh, the street anyway. So if we look at the photos, the top photo is taken from Charlotte, and I'm looking toward the cemetery, the property in question's on the right. Uh, you'll see the chimney in the foreground there, that's the existing house. Going to the bottom photo, uh, it's just a close up of the house that's there on the property, that house would remain. Now I go to page two. Now I'm actually on Water Tower, and I'm looking at the house, which is the top of the photo. Again, the cemetery is up at the left corner there. Uh, next photo on the bottom is further down Water Tower, again, looking in at this house. You could see there's steps there that provide access to a service walk to the door. This property, by the way, uh, the grade of the land falls off from the northeast corner toward both streets, uh, and you'll notice there's a retaining wall on the front edge. That's to hold back the grade, there's a small hill there, about, uh, three feet, but the water runs off toward both streets, Charlotte and Water Tower. All right, I'm on the third page. Top photo here. So this is the area where the house is proposed. Right now, there's a shed back there. Uh, you can see where the wall ends, and, uh, the bottom photo is the back door of the existing house. And then on the last page, I just wanted to get, you know, typical photo of the neighborhood. You could see it's a single family. There's a photo on Charlotte Street, and then the bottom one, uh, is looking up the hill with Water Tower on my left, and the house that's on the property would be, you know, beyond that dead end sign on the left. There was a question about where's there a fire hydrant? There's actually a fire hydrant directly across Charlotte Street from this property, um, in case that issue does come up. So what's proposed is to divide the lot into two. The corner lot would retain the existing home, and the lot would be 94 by 85. Again, the 94 feet is along Charlotte, and the total lot area would be 7990 square feet. The balance of the property, which is down Water Tower, would be about 80 by 94, and that square footage is 7,503 square feet, where there's a new single family home proposed with a driveway, a garage and four bedrooms. I, uh, had reviewed the planning report dated February 26th, and there are a few items I do want to point out with regard to zoning. Again, we're in R7 zone. The minimum lot area for an interior lot is 7,500 square feet. However, the lot area requirement for a corner lot is 8,500 square feet. So as you heard, that corner lot would be 7990, so we're slightly deficient, uh, about 510 square feet on the corner. So that's a variance. The next item is lot depth. The minimum required is 100 feet. The way that this block was created, for whatever reason, the depth of these lots is only 94, so I would say that's an existing nonconformity, but since we're subdividing, he hasn't noted as a variance for each of those two lots. The yard, sorry.
Were you missing that variance?
Um, on the.
If it's not 100 foot, what, what do you, what do you have?
Um, at 94.
94, okay.
The front yard requirement in the zone is 20 feet. Uh, if you look at sheet two of the plan set, the distance, uh, on Water Tower, because that lot technically has two front yards, is 19.7 feet to the existing home, so that's noted as an existing nonconformity. Um, interestingly enough, the right side yard of that lot is 24.1 feet, um, but it no longer becomes a side yard. Once we subdivide, it's now becoming a rear yard, uh, in which case 25 feet's required, and we have 24.1. So again, that relates to the existing dwelling on the property, which is to remain, so it's a rather technical variance that the side yard, you only need eight feet, but now it becomes a rear yard, so it doesn't meet the, uh, minimum 25 feet.
But it's only short by one?
It's short by .9 feet, which, uh, I don't think that's really perceptible, uh, and it is an existing condition. Someone driving by would not even notice, because really nothing's changing over there. The only thing that's changing is we're creating a new lot line, you know, up the street. Anyway, so the last item I want to point out is maximum lot coverage for building. Principal building coverage is limited to 20%. Once this property is divided, our proposed lot 6.02, which encompasses the new house, we're asking for 26.67%, and the building coverage for the existing house, which would become the corner lot, is 20.1%. That's .1% over. I do want to note that even though we are slightly over on the building coverage, we are still under on total lot coverage. The zone allows 45%, and we have 33.3% proposed where the new house is, and 40.4% proposed where the existing house is. So we still comply with the total lot coverage. Um, any questions so far? Okay.
And Mr. Lieber, you have another handout, because I think we did an analysis of this neighborhood, just determined the size of these lots and also, uh, the size of the other corner lots. So we're going to pass that out as well. Uh, that would be A2? I have one.
You have one?
Yeah.
Just make sure they're all the same. A2.
All right, so Mr. Lieber, I know we now have passed out A2, which is a tax map of this particular neighborhood. Uh, you could give the board the benefit of your analysis with respect to lot sizes of the interior lots.
Yeah.
And also the corner lots.
So what you're looking at is a, you know, uh, arts and crafts of three different tax map sheets that I all pasted together to create this neighborhood. The property in question is pink, and, uh, what I did is only in the R7 zone lots, because there is a piece at the bottom right that's B1 on Washington. I took a look just in this neighborhood at corner lots, because again, in the R7 zone, you need 8,500 square feet for a corner lot. I could only find one corner lot in this neighborhood that actually complies, and that's the lot on the corner of Washington and Outlook, that's at the bottom of your paper. All the other lots, I wrote in blue what that square footage is, and none of them are 8,500 square feet. Um, in fact, what I found, which is most interesting, is that the lot that we're creating is 7990, is going to be one of the biggest corner lots in this whole area. Um, the other thing I also want to point out is along Water Tower Lane, for whatever reason, those blocks, uh, 127 and 126 are only 94 feet in depth, where the zone requires 100. There isn't any reasonable way that I could correct that, unless someone else's lot became even more nonconforming. So, you know, I would say that the lot depth variance is certainly a hardship, um, and there's really no practical way to correct that. Now, regarding the interior lots, we're not asking for a variance from the minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet for the new lot, but I did want to point out on this map that most of the lots in this area are either 40 or 80 foot wide lots, that they themselves don't comply with what the R7 zone standard is today. So I don't think that what we're doing here is out of character at all at the neighborhood. I don't even think it's perceptible. I can't imagine anyone would know that our corner lot was 510 feet under on the square footage, especially given what this map shows, uh, as far as our research on the neighborhood.
All right, now, Mr. Lieber, I guess at this point, we did receive, uh, reports from the engineer, from the planner. Uh, let's briefly go over the, uh, the engineer's report. Mr. Chairman, should we do that at this point?
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, so I'm referring again to the report dated, uh, February 24th, 2025, uh, from, uh, Morgan Municipal Engineering. Um, and I believe the, uh, the first several pages, page two of six, just talks about the variances, which, uh, which you just summarized, um, talks about some waivers here. Um, we are asking for, uh, a few design waivers, is that correct? That's on page three?
Yeah.
All right, one of them is, uh, require pavement width, and I, we're obviously talking about Water Tower Lane of 30 feet, uh, we're proposing 28. That's an existing condition, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the left edge of pavement's a little erratic on that street, so, uh, we discussed with the staff about making it consistent width, and we could do 28 feet.
Okay. Uh, second is a sidewalk along, uh, Water Tower Lane. Now, we're asking for a waiver of that, and there's a, a good reason for that, if you can explain.
If you want to just go back to A1 again, if you look at the pictures of that retaining wall, due to the height of that wall and its location, it just, there's no room for sidewalk on that side of the street. Um, the other thing I want to point out is that while there is sidewalk on Charlotte, there's really two houses on Water Tower. Um, well, the proposed house would be one, then across the street, directly across the street is another house. Uh, then there's a house on the corner across the street as well, so this is not a very heavily traveled street. Uh, I don't think that waving sidewalk is a critical, uh, failure, so, and we frankly don't have the room for it.
All right, and then the last waiver was for curbing, uh, which I think is further addressed in the, uh, report of, uh, the engineer, correct?
Yeah, we had proposed to put curb on one side of the street, which is along the retaining wall, but not the other side.
All right, uh, let's go on out to page four, uh, which I think is the substance of the report. Um, paragraph one just talks that, uh, uh, we are in compliance with, uh, off-street parking calculations. Uh, let's talk about paragraph two, where there's a question, I, I, I guess a comment about how emergency vehicles will, uh, will access this street, if you can provide some testimony as to that.
Yeah, I mean, there's no change to what goes on now. If there was to be a vehicle that goes down this street, it is a dead end. Um, whether or not this house ever gets built, it's the same situation. There's no room to build a turnaround, but there's no requirement to build a turnaround either. Um, frank, frankly, when emergency vehicles respond to a dead end street, they will just be directed to backup under the assistance of other, you know, firemen or police.
And there's a hydrant on, on Water Tower Lane, correct?
It's across Charlotte.
Um, all right, number three is just a general comment, of course, we'll, we'll post the necessary performance guarantees. Number four was a question about whether there'll be a basement. I don't think the architectural plan showed a basement, but we do propose to have a basement.
That's right.
We'll show that on the revised architectural plans. Uh, number five deals with tree preservation. Again, I think it's just a general comment stating that we've complied with the, uh, um, with the requirements of that. Certainly, if there's any trees that need to be removed, we'll, uh, we'll note that, uh, further on the plan, uh, and we'll obviously obtain a tree removal permit. Uh, number six is a survey comment. Uh, we'll make that revision. Uh, that, that's easy enough to do. Number seven was a question of how we're going to perfect the subdivision. Uh, we prefer to do it by deed, so we'll, we'll make sure that that's compliant. Um, now, number eight deals with, or number eight A deals with water. Um, I think you've addressed eight A, the fact that there's, there is a hydrant within 400 feet. Uh, Mr. Lieber, how, how do we plan on dealing with, uh, water service to this property, and what are we willing to do with respect to the water department?
I, I don't have a final water design, but I would work that out with the Borough Water Department.
Okay, so whatever the water department requires will.
Yeah.
You have, you have one water hookup to the house, you just need another water hookup?
That's all.
Okay. Uh, it's number five. I think you might be misnumbered, but that's okay. Went from eight to five. Number five on page five, uh, deals with sewer. Uh, just B1 was just a, takes no exception, uh, to the, what we're proposing with respect to sewer. Uh, 5C will comply with the paragraph one with, requires additional spot grades. Uh, number two, um, I think is just a comment, will certainly, as I, as I said before, will comply with any tree removal requirements. Um, number three, we can deal with that with the surveyor as well, Mr. Lieber?
Yeah, we have to get additional topographic information across the street. That's not a problem.
Okay. And finally, the miscellaneous comments. All right, so number one deals with milling and overlaying Charlotte Street to the northern limits of the property.
Mm-hmm.
We would prefer to just restore and repair what's necessary. I know your engineer has spoken to us about this, and he may, he probably wants to weigh in on this, but, uh, this is, at the end of the day, not a heavily traveled street, it's a dead end street, uh, so we would prefer not to mill and overlay the whole thing if necessary, but I'll defer to your engineer on that point.
Okay.
Let's see. Uh, number two, yes, we'll revise whatever plans, whatever, uh, revisions are necessary showing existing utilities. Uh, number three, detail of the proposed concrete curb, we'll add to that to the plan, Mr. Lieber?
Yeah.
All right, uh, number four will comply with, uh, number five. Number five, is there really a just testimony regarding the lighting? Is there any lighting on the street now, Mr. Lieber?
If you go to A1, uh, actually the very first photo, the last pole on the street on the left, you could see in there, there's a light fixture. So I don't see why any additional lighting would be required.
Uh, number six deals with an ADA compliant handicap ramp, we can comply with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And number seven, uh, yes, we'll put the street number for the proposed two-story dwelling on the plans, and certainly number eight, the bond estimate will provide. So I think that addresses the engineering letter, uh, with respect to the planner's letter, Mr. Vandencoy's letter. Um, Mr. Lieber, I believe you covered the variance relief, and I believe your testimony is, uh, probably can be granted under both a C1 hardship variance and under a C2 as well?
Yeah, and just to supplement what I said earlier, this type of lot is totally consistent with this neighborhood. Um, we're not asking to construct a nuisance, we're not creating traffic situation, we're not, you know, dealing with wetlands or flood hazard areas or things of that nature. I mean, to me, it's just a fill-in, or, you know, fill-in project, so to say. It's, the use is permitted, it's a single family home. Um, you know, the land use law provides for the appropriate placement of certain types of uses in certain areas, and this is a completely conforming use, uh, on a very quiet street, so I don't see any real detriment. If someone's going to get a new neighbor, I don't know if that's a detriment. I guess it depends on who your neighbor is, but I, I don't see any planning issues with that.
Okay. All right, on, uh, page three of, uh, the planner's report, uh, we're seeking a waiver of the requirement for street crease?
Yes, if you look at A1, uh, the top photo, we're keeping the trees that are in that photo. The trees that are coming out are the ones on the new lot.
All right, and also, uh, the sidewalk, I think you covered already. Testimony, um, let's see, on the miscellaneous comments, uh, the retaining wall obviously is going to stay, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and finally, there was a question about, um, I guess, requiring a three, a minimum offset of three feet on the entry face of the garage. That can be accommodated, is that correct?
Yeah, the architect can modify the front of the house so that there's more, um, variety in this, in the face, you know?
All right, jumping to page four of the planner's report, um, applicant should address if screening is proposed between the subject site and the cemetery. Um, I can say that it's a quiet neighbor, uh, so I don't think we're proposing any screening, and I don't think they've requested it, quite frankly, the cemetery, so, uh, whatever's there, we'll, we'll try to keep there, but, uh, there's no, no screening that's proposed at this point. Um, Mr. Lieber, paragraph, sub-paragraph four, North Arrow, we can correct that?
Yeah.
Actually, the rest of these are all just, uh, corrections, right? Uh, we'll adjust the zoning schedule. Um, oh, all right. Tree plant, trees or plantings on the easterly property line? Uh, is there any, uh, any opportunity to add any supplemental plantings there?
Yeah, we have space to add if, uh, if needed. I just want to show you that there's a fence over there. If you go to the picture with the shed, where's that? I don't know if you can see, behind the shed, there's a white fence. That's the property line that's being referred to.
All right, certainly if, uh, if the board is inclined, if you, if you'd like us to add some supplemental plantings, we certainly can do that on that property line. Uh, that's really the only property line that we border on with, uh, with any residents. And then lastly, uh, comment about affordable housing development fees, uh, we'll certainly comply with that. All right, anything further, Mr. Lieber?
Just if you have questions.
Okay.
Any questions from the board? Planner or the engineer?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
First, dealing with the traffic circulation, um, while I acknowledge that you're not changing the way of an emergency vehicle would service this area, you are adding another house. Uh, so. So apparently, you're creating a greater demand for the fire department. The fact that the road is gated does create some concern for me. It's not ideal for the vehicle to be backing out down Water Tower Lane into Charlotte. Regarding the road, the road's in really rough condition. My recommendation that the entirety of the road should be milled and repaved. There's already trench repairs that have been done, widening the road on the west side. You don't do a mill and repave, it's going to just look worse. So my recommendation is that the entirety of the road be milled and repaved. Then the question for the board would be, relative to to the utilities, they're currently showing a water main extension in Water Tower Lane and a sewer lateral, not a sewer main extension, to service the new dwelling. The road is going to be milled and repaved in its entirety. It's not a terrible idea to also extend the sewer main possibly, just so you don't have to rip it up at some point if somebody else wanted to extend it.
How far would we have to extend that?
So right now, the sewer lateral that's being run is 172 feet, which is a four-inch line. And the question would be if at some point the cemetery or wanted to extend that sewer line, they wouldn't be tapped into that four-inch line. So if this applicant ran an eight-inch line, the cemetery, if they wanted to pull service, would need to run another fifty or so feet from that line, and they could bring a line into their property.
Is it the applicant's responsibility to make a line bigger for future applications?
Not necessarily. I only bring it up because if we're going to repair the road, I would hate to see them come in and rip the road up if they need the utility. I mean, sewer water is technically an outside agency approval. They need to coordinate with the appropriate agency. I just bring it up as a as a question.
Okay.
To see if it's.
Why would you go from four to six, or four to eight, rather than four to six?
Eight inch would be the minimum size for a water main extension for the state regulations.
Okay. That answered that question. And the sewer main could remain the same at four?
The the lateral, if the lateral was approved, I take no issue with their design. You could serve this home with a four-inch lateral that goes to.
Okay, sure. Right, so it's the water.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I have no additional questions.
Mr. Sacks?
Yeah, I was just to respond to the sewer comment. I would think if there had been other development on that cemetery property, it might be in order, but this is a cemetery. I'm not even sure if there's even any bathroom facilities in there. I don't think there'll ever even be any. Yeah, so I I just think it might be a little bit of overkill. I understand, I recognize the point, but I I think it's.
What do you stand now with the milling?
I think the milling will accommodate. I mean, we understand that the the road is probably in, not in the best shape. I mean, I.
One of the two ain't bad.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, what else? The planner, you want to jump in?
Just something real, yeah, real quick. It's not not a real complex application from a planning perspective, so I really just have more of a of a comment than anything else. So each of the variances that are requested are, in my opinion, relatively minor in nature in terms of them being, yeah, relatively de minimis. They they generally are less than a 10% deviation from what the standard is. The only one that's a, it's still minor, but it's a little bit more than 10% is the, for lot 6.02, the essentially, the, let me just be sure I get everything right on the record here. The maximum building coverage where 20% is required and 26.67% is requested, which I thought I still think is relatively minor in nature. That's really the basis of my comment, where the the screening, you know, question came from as far as the the eastern side of lot 6.02. There is a fence there, so I defer to the board as to whether that's sufficient to mitigate it. It may be. It looks like a six-foot-high white fence. On the other hand, if if you wanted some plantings there, that's a way, that's another option as well. So I just wanted to put the rationale out there as far as that goes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions to any of the professionals? Are we going to open this up to the public? Go ahead.
Not so much a question, but but a comment, because I the the hypothetical that you raised, Mr. Sacks, was actually somewhat incorrect. You you don't know actually what the church has intended for that, and particularly, there is a building there, and it is, in fact, it's hard to say it's active, but it is an active cemetery. And in fact, that that road is used routinely for exit and entry into there. So the issue that a fire, fire apparatus could possibly not access the hydrant on Charlotte is a very real problem, a very real realistic issue, because if you do have vehicles parked on both sides on a road that you're not widening, and I'm not suggesting you widen it because I don't want to take property away from any property owners, the only access they may have is actually through the cemetery, which means they wouldn't be able to run a line from Charlotte. They'd have to run a line directly from where the hydrant should be, which which should be at the end of Water Tower. And as far as sewer and water, the sewer line is concerned, again, since it is an active cemetery, if in fact they decided that they, the church decided that they wanted to have facilities, which would make sense, and who knows if the state would want us to do that at some point, it would be much more expensive for this, for the church, because we didn't extend it when we should have. So again, not a question, but more to kind of explain my thinking as far as this application is concerned on those issues.
I'm going to open up to the public. Can I have a motion to open to the public? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? We'll now open to the public. If you want to speak, you can come up, pronounce your name, and tell me where you live. Spell your name, too. Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Walters.
Hold that down and speak. There you go.
Walter Starzak Jr. I live at 10 Charlotte Street, which is the house on the corner of Charlotte and Water Tower.
Okay.
Born and raised there for 60 years. It's in our neighborhood. It's a lane, it's Water Tower Lane, so the width of it, I don't know how wide you think, plus you say the access to in and out of the cemetery. It's always been, and as the cemetery has grown, obviously, there's been more activity. And with the caretakers and all in the cemetery garage. And with the retaining wall that's on the opposite side of me, which will be on that property, it's, Lord knows how old, and if they're not totally knocking it down and replacing it and what the plan is. And the other key point is the existing house at 16, that's never had a legal driveway or a garage. And I would recommend to sell the property with a nice backyard, have a driveway, a garage, you have room for a pool. Being I lived there 60 years, there's not a better, quieter neighborhood than a cemetery. And we want to keep it that way. And and also, there's no current or drainage. All our water drains all the way down to the corner of Pulaski in Washington. So that's another possible factor to consider.
Okay, that's it. All right, thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Good evening. Name and rank and serial number.
Nicholasburg, 21 Charlotte Street. I am also a volunteer fireman right over here at Engine Company. And coincidentally enough, I was a former fireman in Hall Township with Squonkum, so.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome. To follow up with Walt, I do agree, when we have a lot of rain, there is a lot of drainage. If we are putting a second, single-family story, a single-story family house there, that's going to cause there to be less land to soak up the water. If we're not putting in any drain, if we're not opening up, putting a main line in for the sewer, that's going to cause even more of an issue as far as with heavy rains, especially come April and May.
Does anybody have water in the basements account of this?
I do not, because we are on the top of the hill.
Okay, I I know, I used to walk my dog up in that area. I live on Harrison Street.
Okay.
I know that area real well.
I mean, when it rains, I have a river in front of my.
So do I. I live on the hill, and it all goes down to Washington Road. Yours goes to Pulaski.
Right, so wouldn't having a sewer line to have the water drain in be better than having it just all over the place? I mean, we see what happens on Washington Road when it's too much, because there are no sewers there.
Well, there are. I mean, but when it rains, you know, with the weather that we've been having, it's not uncommon for the sewers to be overflowing.
Correct.
You know, and and I understand that.
But there's also no exit way for them.
Talking about sanitary sewer versus stormwater?
Stormwater.
I think the question maybe for the applicant is, are they willing to provide a dry well or some sort of stormwater treatment for attenuation?
Yes, that's exactly what I was asking our engineer, and yes, we obviously will provide dry wells, whatever stormwater attenuation. Obviously, we can't, we can't have water draining off our property. We've got to be able to contain it there. Yes, we'll do that. And I think the sewer, really, we're dealing with the sanitary sewer comment, so.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so my mistake went between stormwater.
That's all right, there's.
Yeah. And also regarding the fire hydrant issue, yes. We have, I've been to fires where either the hydrant is inaccessible, because cars like to park in front of it, or it's just a dead hydrant, and we have to go down further. So it would be nice if we are going to have a second building there to actually have a hydrant that could work. Additionally, if we're going to be putting in a curb and we have parking on the on the road, that's going to be hard for some of the apparatus to even get through. They are very wide apparatus, and if we're going to be eliminating how much feet square or how much footage we have with the road, that's going to inhibit fire suppression.
So I have an answer.
I think that's something I need to talk to my client about, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Maybe after the public portion, if we could take a.
We'll do that. We can do that.
Thank you.
Very good. That all you have?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Anybody else like to speak on this matter?
Timothy Kupka, 17 Charlotte Street. You two gentlemen brought up very good points. It's about the sewer. There is no bathrooms up there at St. Stan Cemetery, and it would be very wise to extend that. Now, the second issue, what about the water line? How big of a water line is proposed to be brought in? Okay, now, what about the street, milling the street? Because I was born and raised there, lived there 73 years, and back in the day, you know how they did the roads? It was all gravel. They put hot tar on top of it, and the truck came behind and shoveled 3/8 bluestone. So there is no six-inch stabilized base underneath that road at all. So if you want to rip it all up and go through all that cost, that's the proper way of doing it.
Is that up to their engineer to make sure that 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 happens?
So in order to do a mill and repay, if there's base failure or anything like that, they would have, that would be a full-depth repair, and we can ask them to do core samples if we suspect that the the road has a deficient profile, and if the core samples result in efficient subbase, the the answer is a full-depth reconstruction of the entire road.
All right, Mr. Sacks, a question to you is, will you do the corrings?
I have to talk to my client about that.
All right, we'll we'll address that after the. Thank you very much.
No, I have one more question.
Okay.
When you tap into sewer, is there going to be a manhole?
Right now, the applicant is not proposing a sewer main extension. They're proposing a four-inch lateral, so they typically require a manhole. I would defer to the engineer, their engineer, to determine if if there's anything manhole they are connecting to, or just going to connect with a Y fitting.
There is no manhole out in the street, so they don't even know how deep the sewer is.
I would, I would defer that question to Mr. Lieber.
Yeah, I spoke with sewer.
Stand up, please, take on the phone.
I did speak to the Borough Sewer Department. He had provided me the mapping for that area. At that intersection, it's a deep line. Based upon this plan, it's it's around 13 feet down. It's a deep connection. Yeah.
So you need a manhole?
There's no requirement for a manhole. They have a something called a deep house connection, which you can connect to a main that's deep. There's there's no technical requirement for a manhole.
So this this lateral will only be for the new house?
That's right.
The other house is 13 feet down, and that that lateral is going to stay?
I mean, I have to imagine all the houses on the street are.
They they all have to be down.
They all have to be deep. You know, I don't know what the line is, but they're all connected, so.
All right. Mr. Kupka, you have anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. Very insightful. Anybody else like to speak on this? All right.
Yes, Steve Smrzinski, 26 Pulaski Avenue. Very well, thank you. I'm on the corner of Pulaski and Charlotte.
You get all the water?
Yes, after every rainstorm you drive by, like after today, tomorrow, you'll see just sand on that corner.
Come down, come down to Harrison Street, and I'll show you the same sand.
Yeah, and but anyway.
That part of town just drains all, you know, Deerfield, your way, my way.
Well, regarding this this subdivision, I'd have to admit, I have a bias against this, because, you know, I lived here my whole life. And, you know, this was a beautiful town, and I think one of the problems is the population density in this town. It adds traffic, it adds parking problems. Now, I did hear the engineer describe the new property, and he said that there's a driveway going in. How about for the original property that's there right now? There's another dri, two driveways.
But that driveway is on Charlotte. That's shown on sheet three.
Where does that go on Charlotte? Sits us.
It's on the right side of the house.
So the existing house has a driveway? Are you going to approve that? I guess.
There is no existing driveway in the new house. But that opening that he's referring to is where he's planning to put the new property.
Yeah, so if you're standing in Charlotte looking at the existing home.
There is no driveway.
They're proposing one on the right side of the home, that there'll be a new driveway.
Well, that's just.
For the existing house.
For the existing house, okay.
The new house is going to have a garage with a driveway that enters from the front.
So anyway, like I said, if I have to accept the subdivision, I would, I wish you would make sure that there's ample parking. Because, you know, this house has been vacant for about a year, I think.
That's what I gathered when I walked by her the other day.
When people were living there, though, they had at least four vehicles, and the people end up parking at Charlotte Street. And, I mean, we've, we're about four years removed from people that were living on Pulaski Avenue, at 36 Pulaski. And I think they were, they had occupants there, you know, that were beyond the zoning laws, because they had at least, sometimes you would count 10 vehicles, and they would fill up Pulaski Avenue and Charlotte Street. So anyway, that's my my concern. That's all.
Parking.
Parking. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one more. I don't know if there's anybody else. Anybody else like to speak? And two people that haven't gotten up. Ma'am, you in the back, would you like to speak? You're good? You're good? That's fine. I just want to make sure I didn't. Mr. Sacks, you're up.
Yeah, just quickly to respond to the parking, we do comply with the RSIS, so we provide enough off-street parking based on the residential site improvement standards, which are mandatory throughout the state, so. So, Mr. Chairman, if there's no more public, maybe we could take a brief five-minute recess. Just want to talk to my client about some of the concerns raised. Uh, yeah.
No, we. And then come back?
Yeah, I'll come.
You have to open back up? Public portion? No. All right, I'll make, I'll take a motion to close the public portion.
Motion to close?
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? All right, I'm going to take a a 10 minutes recess, and we'll be back at 8:30, and we'll go over this matter some more.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, everybody good? Know where we stand here?
application, it's not a major. With respect to the, um, to the water, all right? We are willing to do the water main extension. I mean, it's going to be at great expense, but we're willing to do that. And if the installation of a hydrant, an additional hydrant, even though there's one right across the street, but if the, if the, if the installation of an additional hydrant will facilitate easier service for your fire company, then we're willing to do that also, Mr. Chairman. All right? With respect to the sewer, again, we, we go with what we proposed, I understand Councilman Zabrowski's comments. But again, we're not, this is not a major subdivision application, it is a minor. The cemetery is controlled by outside agencies. Believe it or not, cemeteries are not even controlled by this planning board or by a zoning board, it's controlled by a state agency. So if, even if they wanted to do an expansion, they have to go to, uh, they have to go to that state board, so you don't even have jurisdiction over that. So I, I understand the concern, but again, we're talking about one house on a minor subdivision application, and we are agreeing to really spruce up that roadway, we're going to mill and repave it, we're going to provide that water line. But I think unfortunately, the cost to do, to run a sewer extension would just be totally cost prohibitive for, for us to proceed. I, I know that's not a consideration for this board, but again, if it was, if it was a vacant farmland, probably well within your rights to insist upon it. But since it's a cemetery that's not, not subject to control by this board, I don't think we, we would have that obligation. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. And hopefully, I think we've addressed a lot of the concerns of the neighbors, particularly with respect to the water, particularly with respect to, uh, this access by emergency vehicles. And we are going to put dry wells on this property, we are willing to add supplemental landscaping on that easterly property line, and we'll work with your staff on that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, anything you have to want with the retaining wall? I have a couple of questions made.
Yeah, the retaining wall is going to have to stay, because if we take it down, I don't know what's going to happen to the, to the soil on the other side of that retaining wall, because there is an existing house there, so.
Retaining wall in decent shape?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know.
Like I pulled down tomorrow?
No, it's not going to fall.
Okay.
It was built properly, there's plenty of weak balls for the water to get out, so.
Further, is that, that's it? Want to close?
Mr. Chairman, nothing further, I, yeah, I'll just, one thirty-second close. I believe we've, uh, we've addressed the, uh, the concerns of your engineering staff, I believe we have addressed the concerns of your planning staff. The variance relief that we're seeking really is de minimis. There is no additional land for us to get to abate, to make that corner lot even larger. You know, we, we could obviously shave a little bit off of the interior lot, but then you're going to have two lots that are not conforming, because right now, the interior lot would be conforming, the one adjacent to the cemetery. So I'd request that the board factor that in. I believe we've satisfied the proofs under both the C-one and C-two analysis, under hardship and under flexible C, so we'd request that the board grant this application with the conditions that we've represented on the record.
What's your pleasure?
Chair, I think to make a motion to approve the application with all stipulations.
Have any waivers? Do I have a, we have a motion made to accept the application with the waivers and the appearances that have been presented before us tonight, what's your pleasure, do I have a second?
Second.
Having a second?
Roll call vote.
Do we have anybody opposed? We'll take a roll call vote.
Mr. Candell?
Yes.
Ms. Larmen?
Yes.
Mr. Mueller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Taka?
Yes.
Mr. Veluson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Zabrowski?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the residents that came out and spoke, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board.
Okay, next on the agenda, old business, new business administrative matters, our next meeting's on March nineteenth.
Do you want to open up for the public? Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Anyone from the publics?
Anybody from the public like to speak? Anybody from the public like to speak, hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public? Motion to close? Have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good night, everybody, thank you.
And look at this, we have.